Thank you Father. Working together, love each right now. We actually said which Father trusted our God, our Father blessed coming to people who look.
Amen. Thank you, Minister flag. I pledge allegiance for our nation. I have business for.
Everybody's had the earth in it. Some of them have a motion on the floor. All is a favor please raise your right hand.
We have Chairman under item number, that is due for architectural subject to the county manager approval.
Thank you. Special recognition. Oh, I got to break that. Sorry. I'm getting there. This is the second meeting in a row that we've had a Wayne County citizen that has reached 100 years of age. And as I told Carol, I said, I never thought I'd make it to where I am now. It's amazing people were living though. She asked me to read this. It's from Ms. Martha Sutton. Dear Ms. Sutton, happy 100th birthday. It is a pleasure to share this statement to you and offer my best wishes to you on this special day. Longevity of life is the blessing for an individual and for the community in which they live and for the benefits of their knowledge, creativity, and experiences which they bring to all. You achieved a remarkable milestone to have lived 100 years. Thank you for the numerous contributions you have made to strengthen Wayne County. On behalf of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, Staff, and Citizens of Wayne County, congratulations on your special day celebration and happy birthday. Next, we've got police service pins. I think we need to step down.
Receiving if you will wait out there. Pat Garner with Public Affairs would like to get a group photo and start putting those on the website. So if you have a moment afterwards, that would be great. All right, we'll begin with those receiving their one-year service pin. Lee Holtz with the Reading Literacy Program. Susie Acre, Reading Literacy Program. Howard P. Anthony, DSS Regular Services. Ashley R. Arnett, Emergency Services. Tracy N. Karen T. Cotton, Non-Emergency Transport. Christina A. Jonathan E. Angeline M. Anthony E. Caitlin N. Holland, Non-Emergency Transport. Catherine D. Lancaster, DSS Administration. Kristen A. Mangonia. Issues with Non-Emergency Transport. That is not how that is spelled. Stephanie D. Marshbur, Health, Family Planning. Terry L. Nance, Non-Emergency Transport. Ryan S. Norman, Emergency Medical Services. Monica H. Nicole B. Olive, Tax Administration. Serena S. Williams, DSS Child Support. Joanne N. Brick Shavana, DSS Income Maintenance. James M. Edwards, Jr., Non-Emergency Transport. Sean J. Jennifer M. McKinley, DSS Child Support. Diane L. Mullins, Health, Maternity Care. Tanya M. Pendry, Health, Family Planning. Kristen G. Ratcliffe, DSS Regular Services. Pamela S. Walker, DSS Income Maintenance. And Leslie D. Williams, DSS Regular Services. All right, that's it for our one-year. Next, we'll get to our five-year. All right, we'll begin with Dane C. Beavers, Board of Elections.
Hey, Dane.
Next is Scott A. Shanita Devon Nguyen, Health Department, WIP. Tamara A. Taylor A. Harrison L. Hall, Emergency Medical Services. Kelly J. Howell, Non-Emergency Transport. And Daniel Martinez, Jail. That does it for our five-year pins. And now for our ten-year service pins. Felicia N. Dayana Hamilton, Health, Maternity Care. And Dennis G. All right, now for our 15-year service pins. Joy Lee Coley, Health Department, Maternity Care. I just want to mention Brian Taylor, he wasn't able to be here, but he should receive his 15-year today as well. Joseph F. And that's it for our 15. And we have one 20-year pin recipient today, and that would be Michael K. Cox with the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Chairman, while we're doing recognition, I thought I'd take a minute just to introduce to everyone to Andrew Neal, who is our new staff attorney. Y'all, of course, have all met him. We were in on the interviews. But we don't have a pin for you for two weeks.
Not yet.
He has started up two weeks ago, and we're delighted to have you with us, Andrew.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Okay. Last lot of, well, I guess we stop public comments section. Someone has something they want to say. If you'll come up to the mic, give us your name, your address, and your phone number. If you might stay at home. Permit Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've met. We have two. First, we'd like to recommend the reappointment of Michelle Estrada to the Wayne County Latino Council. I put his form of motion.
Have a motion on the floor. Is any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. Thank you.
And next, we'd like to recommend the reappointment of Freda Brock to the Wayne County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. I'd like to put this in form of motion.
Have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. Okay. We talked about going into unfinished business. We talked about this in the earlier session about the bids for the farmer's market. Did anybody else have any additional questions on that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I take a motion that we reject all the bids for the farmer's market and authorize changes to the specifications and rebidding of the project.
And we have motion on the floor. Any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to number two, to select the architect and designer of the Shell Industrial Building and four EMS stations. Any questions on that system, whatever it is?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we select architect for design of the Shell Industrial Building and the four EMS stations.
Have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. Thank you. And finally, unfinished business, which we went over at length as well, is the MHA works that was added on. Is any additional questions there?
Yeah. The only thing I would add is I would like the motion to say, subject to the county attorney and county manager approving the actual language of the AIA contract. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Salute.
As he said. Has a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. We went over the consent agenda at length in the earlier session. Are any additional questions on that? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, Mr. Chairman.
I think John mentioned. Have a motion on the floor. Is any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. In the earlier session, we had Mr. Pomtana come up to give the presentation for the Village Free Ride event. So we'll move on past that because he needed to get back to work and appreciate he'd come in earlier. Number two, we'll need to establish a public hearing on December the 5th, 2017, at 9:15 in the Commissioners' Meeting Room to see public comments on the consolidation of Paytown and Antioch Fire Service Districts. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set the public hearing for December the 5th for the consolidation of Paytown and Antioch Fire Service Districts.
Have a motion on the floor. Is any discussion? All is a favor please raise your right hand. Thank you. Video update?
Pardon?
I took the video update.
A video update? I was writing. It's my turn, sorry.
Congratulations.
Hello and welcome to the county update video for October 2017. This video is produced by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners each month to keep county officials informed about association activities. On Saturday, August 12th, the NCACC wrapped up its 110th Annual Conference in Durham County. The event culminated with the swearing-in of the NCACC's 101st President, Durham County Commissioner Brenda Howerton. During the business session of the conference, Ronnie Smith, Martin County Commissioner, was elected as serving of the association's next second vice president. In addition, commissioners voted for Surrey County Commissioner Larry Phillips to serve as President-elect, and Yadkin County Commissioner Kevin Austin to serve as first vice president. Furthermore, Davidson County Commissioner Fred McClure became immediate past president. During the conference, several individuals were honored for their support of counties. Fred McClure, NCACC immediate past president and Davidson County Commissioner, received the Outstanding County Commissioner Award. Delala Blanks, former Bladen County Commissioner and NCACC past president. David Thompson, former NCACC Executive Director. And Danny Wright, former Vance County Commissioner and NCACC past president, were all inducted into the NCACC Hall of Fame. Michael Sprayberry, Director of North Carolina Emergency Management, received the Friends of the Counties Award. And the UNC School of Government received the Distinguished Service Award. Additionally, several counties were recognized by the local government, Federal Credit Union, and the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service for establishing innovative practices that improve services for citizens. You can view those award recipients and more information on all NCACC awards by visiting ncacc.org. NCACC President Brenda Howerton introduced her presidential initiative titled 100 Counties: Helping Our Children Thrive. It will focus on how counties can support the growth and development of children. At a related event, the NCACC partnered with the NC School Boards Association and the UNC School of Government's NC Impact Team to discuss pre-kindergarten and early education investments in North Carolina at a recent meeting in Chapel Hill. The program titled Thinking Big for Small People: Why Are NC County Leaders So Enthusiastic About Pre-K for Four-Year-Olds was specifically designed for local policymakers curious about pre-k and actively considering pre-k expansion options and creating strategies to reach more children. NCACC President Brenda Howerton and Executive Director Kevin Leonard presented at the event. You can visit the UNC School of Government website for more information. Several steering committees will meet in the coming months. The dates and locations of those meetings will be available soon at ncacc.org/staringcommittees. You can also sign up to participate in steering committees on that webpage. NCACC Board of Trustees had their annual retreat in September where they heard detailed reports on the state of the association risk pools. The NCACC Board of Directors will meet in Derrick County in October as President Howerton will lead her first meeting as president. The NCACC Executive Committee and officials from the League of Municipalities met with Governor Roy Cooper in Raleigh in September to discuss issues important to local governance. There's a wealth of information on our website about other NCACC events and resources, including the County Map Book, Progress on County Leadership Forums, Onobio Abuse, information on county best practices, and you can read more about any of the topics we've discussed here. Well, that wraps it up for this month. Thank you for watching and allowing us to keep you updated on your association's activities. If we can help you or answer any questions, please feel free to contact us directly using the information on your screen. Thanks again for joining us, and we'll see you next month.
County managers' comments.
I'm not going to give any because we're going to be going over a lot of stuff.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, let's see. Mr. Bell?
I don't have any. I didn't have any meetings since our last meeting, but I would like to make a comment about the EMS. Back in August, I had to call them to pick up my wife and take her to the hospital, and they did not know I was the county commissioner at the time they did it. And I have never seen such professionalism towards my life as what they provided at my residence. They really took care of my life. They were very cautious. It was very impressive to watch those people go through the effort of getting hurt from my home to the hospital. So I didn't mention it at our last meeting, but I would like for somebody just to pass on to the EMS people how professional those people were back in August when they picked my wife up at the hospital, took her to the hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. Acop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend the State of the Militaries meeting at the Global Events Center. Kind of briefed on what's going on at the base by the two, by the base commander and by the wing commander of the base. And also, as everyone knows, October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I just wanted to encourage all of the citizens of Wayne County, especially the female population. Breast cancer is, it's, you know, any cancer is serious, but breast cancer affects a lot of, a lot of ladies, young ladies, old ladies, middle ladies. I mean, it doesn't discriminate. So make sure that you, that you stay on top of your exams because breast cancer is a cancer that can be treated now. If it's caught early enough, breast cancer can be treated. Some cancers are not, patients are not as fortunate. Some forms of cancer, they do not have a handle on yet. But breast cancer is ones that they can pretty much deal with if they catch it early enough. And I guess one of the biggest reasons that I'm pitching for this for, for our ladies in the county, for the breast cancer awareness, I'm, I don't know whether you would say I'm fortunate enough or unfortunate enough. Small percentage of breast cancers are in males. I happen to be one of those. 1% of breast cancer patients are male. And I consider myself very blessed. If you're going to have cancer, you know, have one that is treatable. I'm a five-year survivor, so that tells you that, you know, breast cancer can be, can be treated. So I just ask that everyone just stay on top of your examinations and, so if you are diagnosed in an early stage, that it can be handled. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Bell?
Yeah, I had, want to mention a couple of things. On the 10th, which was last Tuesday, I was at the Manufacturing Day at the Global Trans Park, put on by the Global Trans Park at Kinston Jetport. And of course, that represents, Wayne County was involved, as you saw, the WCDAs was there. But it represents Craven, Green, Jones, and Miller in Wayne Counties. And there was hundreds of students. I haven't received a count as to how many middle school and high school students were, went through the exhibits that were there at the airport. But Wayne County was also involved in Manufacturing Day. Our small company, we had 28 middle school students from the North County take a tour of our small machining facility here in Wayne County. It's important that we continue to support, attend, go see, to try to get the word out to middle schoolers and high schoolers that there are other avenues, career paths, but we have to present it to them. And this is a great way of doing it. It shows people in machining, welding, whatever, HVAC. So we need to continue to put this out there as often as we can to let our students know what's available. Real quickly, Tammy Schrinker, our new Department of Social Services Director, I started on October 9th. I happened to stop by, actually, that Monday afternoon. And I didn't, I didn't stay very long because she had everything. I mean, she was busy. She hit the ground, she hit the ground running. And I've been checking within, checking in with her once in a while, and she's, she's really been well-received as we knew on the DSS Board. And so I think one of the commissioners earlier today mentioned that this, this is something, finally, that we as a county and a DSS Board can put to rest because I'm sure that we have found the right director. On a matter of a personal note, in case you don't know, last week I went to see Earl Merritt. He is at home. He's doing well. When I went to see him last week, you could, very, very little droop in his jaw. He was talking really good. I don't think he missed but maybe a couple of words here and there. And his prognosis is, according to the doctors, that even though he had too much of strokes, that he will not have any effects from that due to the stroke buster that he received at Vitam in Greenville. So just keep earling his family in your prayers. Drop him a card in the mail. I have his address or give him a call. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marty?
Thank you. First, I'd like to give a personal thank you to Mr. Barry Merrill. I was invited to the Rotary meeting last week, and I think what spurred him to invite me was that he had invited our chairman, our manager, Mr. Wood, down to talk to Mount Olive about the state of affairs in Wayne County. And of course, I appreciate you inviting me. As, as owner and editor of the Tribune, let me sort of add that to that and thank you again. Say a few words about Mr. Wood, just for the benefit of the county. He covered all the bases, pretty much lit me of all the things that have been accomplished. And sometimes, well, all the time, persons are reluctant to, toot their own horn, but there's been a lot of progress made. And, but John Bell, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the fact that, as Mr. Bell always tells us, the previous boards were cognizant about how they spent money and, so there was, we had resources to do things. But it also takes a pretty darn good manager to be able to take that and move us forward. And so I think he's left us in good shape, Mr. Honeycutt, to move forward under your leadership and your time come. Mr. Bell and I had an opportunity yesterday as part of an ongoing process to meet with the president of Wayne County to College. I had, I shook his hand at a reception that he had when he came here, but knowing how busy people can be, I had not made any other attempt to gain his personal audience. And so thanks to the regular process, we had an opportunity to meet with him yesterday. Mr. Acop, serving on that board, had come back to us on several occasions and assured us that they were picking the right person. And so, Mr. Acop, I believe y'all did do a good job. Great personality and... y'all did do a good job. Great personality. And listening to him talk, he's had experience around the nation, dealing with a wide variety of situations and people. So I think Wayne County is in good hands. I have, I visited, I also went to the State of the Military situation, and it was a great presentation. But I would like to allude to just one point that they made. The commander, the wing commander, Colonel Sage, he spoke, closed it out, but he also let us know that they had done, among other things, they had done two nuclear response exercises. They had done, and John is our military person on the board and served in the Air Force, and without dragging, pulling him into this, I would assume that if you did two nuclear response exercises, you might have reason to believe that that practice may be put into purpose. It's good to know that our military practices those things as stand-ready, but it's a little bit frightening to know that they feel like that we may be approaching that time. We have a person in, we don't have him, but there's a person in North Korea that makes blusterous statements, and we have a person in Washington, DC to answer those on a regular basis. I just want the public to do just a little bit of going back and looking at what happened to Hiroshima and Nagasaki in World War II, to understand that this is not, we're not talking about a flower waving. We're talking about real serious stuff. And while I've always felt like we stood ready because I've always sort of kept read up on what we have planned out in the deserts in Nevada and places like that, so we have the ability to respond. But I just want the public to maybe come just a little bit more aware that we need to be cautious when, our leaders need to be cautious when they talk casually about nuclear war. There's something called a nuclear winter, and I wish folks would read about that because it's not like we're going to be sitting here isolated on some perfect hemisphere and it not touch us. So I just was ongoing to say out loud this morning that we, because we have cell phones and tweets and Twitter, we need to make sure that our leadership understands that we believe that there is a place for negotiations. To close this out, I also had an opportunity to, I have an opportunity to serve on the University of Mount Olive Foundation Board, and I had an opportunity to meet with them last week. And it's kind of, it's refreshing to know that we have a good university in the South and a good community college in the North that's serving our population. And I think they're doing both a good job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doherty?
Do I have any time left?
I didn't want to get us home too early.
I think the word that I want to talk about today is communication. I too met with the president of Wayne Community College and enjoyed that one hour. And I concur. I think you all definitely made the right choice. But one of the things that I found in that conversation I want to share, and that is, I think all of us have been somewhat perplexed over the hangups on the Advanced Manufacturing Center. And yesterday, I finally got an answer in regards to what some of those hangups are. I was not aware, as I told Dr. Walker, you know, ask me something about modular homes and manufactured homes, and I can answer that. But when it comes down to education, I'm really not into that. With this program, if you are moving a program, the entire program off-campus into a location, you must provide all of the support services that is required, that you are providing on-campus. And I wasn't aware of that. Nobody's told us that. So when we were trying to move off-campus and actually create the Advanced Manufacturing Center, no one turned to us and said, oh, by the way, if you do that, you're going to have to bring all of those services to that location. And there's where the hangup is. It's kind of like the state construction office. They have their own rules and regulations and way to operate. So in talking with Dr. Walk yesterday, and I said, you know, I'm kind of an out-of-the-box guy, you know? I don't, I'm not really into all these regulations, strict regulations and such. And I would like us to find a way, if it's possible, to do, to go ahead and open up the Advanced Manufacturing Center without providing all of those auxiliary services. And he turned to me and he said, you know, maybe we could move a portion of it, but we're going to have to find some way to actually adhere to the regulations, but let's get the Advanced Manufacturing Center moved. I at least found a reasonable explanation for the delays, and it was really interesting, and I wanted to share that with you. Great guy. Really think we've got a real winner there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes, as Commissioner Acop and Camardi mentioned earlier about the State of the Military, I also attended. It's very well-attended and very informative. And I'd like to announce that the NC Grange will be celebrating 150th Anniversary Saturday, the 28th, at Wayne Fairgrounds. And Granton Grange will be hosting this event. There'll be activities wherever you want, free admission from 10 to 5. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
Commissioner Camardi kindly touched on it a little bit, but Colonel Sage also informed us at the State of the Military, we do have a squadron deployed now, and they're in the hotspot. He said, undisclosed location. But so, you know, it's pretty obvious that they're in a hotspot. But we got to keep those ermine in our thoughts and prayers. But the main thing is, when you've got a fourth of the planes at Seymour Johnson deployed, that leaves a lot of spouses and children at home. And we need to, we need to reach out and, you know, they need help. They, you know, the mothers are having to raise the children, or either in some cases, the fathers is having to raise the children. So just keep our military that's deployed, all of our military, but especially the ones we've got deployed right now. Keep them in our prayers, and the families that's back home, just worrying about them every day. Thank you.
All right, just a couple of things. You mentioned the Council Awareness Month. We're very fortunate in this county to have Dr. Caspari here. If you saw that, he's been rated one of the top council doctors in the country, and a fine gentleman, too. I served on the hospital board with him. A great fellow.
He's my doctor, Mr. Chairman.
I know that. And we got industry tours coming up next week. Is that correct? Is it on next Thursday? Anybody who hasn't been out to our industries, I think it's next Thursday, isn't it?
Have what?
Industry tours.
We have a tournament this Thursday?
I know. I know. It's a golf tournament. I think it's next week, I appreciate it. If you'll check with Tiffany Creach, I'm sure she'll line you up. I also had an opportunity to meet with Dr. Walker. I probably was the first one to talk with him, and I echo what my fellow commissioners were saying. And I too went directly to the Advanced Manufacturing Center as my first topic, asking if there was any ways we could move this forward as soon as possible, and had a lengthy discussion with him about that. And I appreciate the fact that he's reaching out to all the commissioners to communicate with each one of us. So he'll know what we're thinking so we can all work better together, you know, for the betterment of the community. And finally, and I'm looking really forward to this, I will be out of town again fighting through next Wednesday. It'll be the first rural vacation I've taken in five years, so don't call me. You're in charge. I know on the agenda, it's got the work session coming up next, but that's going to be pretty lengthy. I think we need to go back to closed session before we finish up what we, and get that done, then take a break and come out and concentrate on that. You guys agree with that? Yeah. Okay. So we're going back to closed session for the reasons you said earlier?
Same, same thing, just.
Next round for closed session.
Same.